The Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could you please join me for a moment of silence for men and women in uniform? Thank you. A few of you here tonight, if you just make sure that all comments or questions come through the chair and then we'll get those to answer that are appropriate, I appreciate it. Adjustments to the agenda, John?
I have SGNH Energy Resources LLC, are they here tonight? Okay, we do have them, that's good. I know he came in and met with Keith and walked around the land we have up at the treatment plant. And there's a letter of recommendation from Armatha Thompson on the applicants to school board. And I believe we gave you some additional information on all the road work that we that we can talk about that one. We have on the agenda is the Almond Street update under NIMBET 8.
That it?
Yep.
Thank you. Are you ready?
I'm ready.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Stephen Hall, I'm representing a company called Dirigo Solar. And Dirigo Solar is an early-stage development company for industrial and commercial-sized solar projects. And we are currently out looking to site some projects. And we've been dealing with various municipalities, we have a contract with another municipality in Maine, we have a contract at a couple regional airports that we're looking at. And little change in plan tonight, I was supposed to have a business associate here that was unable to make it due to a family emergency, so I have to take over. And I had a little change too, I'm actually an employee of Dirigo Solar now as project developer for Western Maine, so I will be representing that company tonight. So what we had, our business plan basically is that we operate in a probably a very similar fashion to what cell companies do when they're looking at proposing cell tower leases on, you know, personal property or municipal property where they look at leasing a portion of land, paying an annual lease fee, and then using the site to put up our solar arrays. Our company was established about three years ago due to a PUC-mandated contract for 100 megawatts of solar power. And the company was set up to implement that and get those projects developed and set up throughout the state. Since then, in recent developments, about two months ago, the governor signed a renewable energy bill in that has been kind of a benefit to companies like us that also look at net metering opportunities. And that has allowed the size of the projects to be much greater and more feasible at that point. So we took a look at two sites here in Rangelay and one being Chick Hill. Keith took us up and we were looking at what would be considered some dormant and unused land currently and as far as we could see in the future as well. We're also looking at properties surrounding the airport because that's another area that we want to develop as well. We've dealt with projects at airports and dealt with the FAA. So what we propose to do is we come in and we look at, like I said, commercial industrial-sized projects. We prefer a minimum of 10 acres and we can go up as high as probably around 50 acres. To give you a size of what the projects would look like, a five-acre project would yield about 2 megawatts worth of power. And to put that in normal perspective, 2 megawatts would power about 2,000 homes over the course of a year. So we would be looking at a minimum of 10, like I said, probably in the 10 to 20 acre parcel range. And the way, again, the business plan model works is that we would pay a lease rate per acre and that would be paid per year on an annual basis. What we would do as far as lease rates is if there was interest, we would negotiate something in probably an executive session to establish those rates. One of the other benefits to the town would be the potential for net metering. We would not directly connect to the town, but with the new changes that have come in the law, we could net meter, which essentially means it's a, it's basically a virtual contract. So you would continue to pay your monthly CMP bill and we would negotiate a rate with you that would be above wholesale but below market value. So you would see whatever that cost savings below market value would be as essentially a rebate on your monthly rates. There is, the way our projects work as well, there's no cost to the town as far as developments. We do the lease, we do the construction, we operate, we maintain the facilities. And so again, the benefits to the town would be the annual lease payments as well as the potential for net metering. Regardless of location, the town as a whole could take advantage of the net metering. I mean, it doesn't have to be specific to say the Chick Hill water plant or the airport. You can, if you're set up for that, it would be set up with the town. So it would be as a whole on your power bill that we would be able to look at something like that. So our intent tonight would be just to gauge if there was any interest in looking into this further and proceeding. If there is, steps forward would be we would present the town with a sample contract and lease agreement, look at negotiating a lease price. The power price would have to be negotiated at a later date because the rates have not been established by the state PUC yet that we would be negotiating from because of the bill just being signed into law a couple months ago. We've had an opportunity to look, like I said, Keith took us through the Chick Hill site. There looked like some very good opportunity there. There's also some potential area around the airport runway that would be considered viable locations as well. Part of what we look for is sites that are obviously open mainly subwelly exposure with close proximity to three-phase power nearby, which these sites in particular do address that criteria. So I don't know if there's any questions, but we'd have to take and try to answer whatever I can give you.
Start with the board.
Any questions?
Yes.
So Steve, I guess we could assimilate this with the Verizon lease that the town was presented with, with the tower. So Verizon, what they did, they came to us, they said, "Look, we're going to rebuild the tower, we're going to pay you rent and, you know, and maintenance." So the, do you have a range of what you've reimbursed towns for as far as a lease rate per acre? And what's the typical contract length you look for?
We look for a minimum of 30-year contracts. We do have rates, but some of the rates that we have established with other municipalities were established prior to this legislation being signed. And at that point, we offered, we had to offer lower rates. So the rates we are now offering are higher than what we were previously able to do. And again, we would, due to the nature of competitiveness for sites, we prefer to negotiate that in executive session if possible.
So describe what the, what do you mean by competitive, sir? Are there, you know, companies shopping around for ideal sites or?
There are, there's a number of companies out there. The business models can be different from one company to the next. Some companies look to have the owner of the municipality or whatever offer up some investment. Our business model does not require any of that and we've tried to keep it on a very simplistic basis for contractual agreements and otherwise, to make it as streamlined as possible for all parties.
Yeah, I think, I think this is the first time we've ever presented with a lease option where it's like no cost to the town will... And that it isn't site-specific, that the energy generated could, you know, benefit the town town-wide? Because Keith, you're, I mean, you've got the individual pump stations that generate their own heavy electrical use. Five or six of them and then collectively that big electric bill for Chick Hill.
So what you're saying is net metering would benefit this building we're sitting in now if we put, if we put the array up and on the airport site?
Correct.
It would also benefit the pump station next to Lake Side Convenience that the town owns, the Comfort Stations, the bathhouses, et cetera, et cetera.
Any town, if the, if the agreement was negotiated specifically with the town of Rangelay, any electrical costs that you currently incur would be able to be reduced by this contract.
So we could put it up at Chick Hill and pretty much just have one spot for the whole thing, kind of? Because they've got the most room and they face south.
Right, and again, Keith took us up and we're allowed to walk the site down. And it's interesting, normally we would do a satellite overlay presentation and where the fact that it's under continuous change, it's, there are no current satellite pictures, so it's a little unique in that respect, but it's also a good site in the sense that there is some opportunity to sort of customize the way the site is finished off, I believe, and therefore making the site potentially more opportunistic than it might otherwise be.
So you guys will own the equipment?
We own the equipment.
And you'll maintain the equipment, you don't have anything to do with the equipment, that's different.
That's correct, yeah. You have, there's no ownership, groundkeeping, maintenance, end-of-life disposal, all of that is in the contract that, and we maintain all of that.
We're responsible for keeping the snow off it, I'm assuming. You're not going to drive up here and every time the snow will fall.
Probably not, most of the panels are set up so that they shed the snow well.
Maybe yes, maybe no.
Yeah, and again, that would, that would still probably fall under our own.
Yeah, okay. So basically, if anything goes wrong, you guys come up and fix it, it don't cost us, it doesn't cost us anything?
That's correct, because essentially we're, we're making money off it at the same time as the town is receiving savings, so it's in our benefit to keep it as operational and functional as possible.
Okay, now when you say net metering, what's a typical net metering that you're experiencing now after the laws have changed?
Where the law has just recently been signed, there, the PUC is going to set some pricing. That has not been done yet, so we haven't seen any. But to give you an example, a hypothetical example, would be if you were paying, say, $14 a kilowatt for your power currently, about 14 cents. And we negotiated a below-market rate of, again, hypothetical, say eight or nine cents a kilowatt, we would be reimbursing you that six cents per kilowatt on a monthly basis. So again, you would continue to pay your bill as normal, but you would see the money coming as a rebate back to the town on a monthly basis based on our negotiated rates.
So use, use, use numbers that you make what, we make what?
We would make at least above wholesale, which again, I don't have the rates established.
60-40 split, 20-30-70?
It would be somewhere between a 60-40 and a 70-30 split.
Okay.
Are the rebates fluid like CMP rates are? Or is your rate rebate, if you gave us 10% rebate and all of a sudden they decide to go up 50% because they'll probably do that next week? Do we, I mean, does that change?
Generally, what, it would be fluid, it usually moves with the rates, it's really the only way it would work well. And again, the reason we're able to do this is because this is essentially not a direct power sale to you, it's a side contract essentially to reimburse you and agreed upon a month.
From a physical plant standpoint, when you said you need to be reasonably close to three-phase power, which reasonably close?
Typically, I mean, within sight, and we've been up at Chick Hill as well and that's what we look for. And in the site with the pump house is located or the main office building, there's three-phase transformers right there.
Okay.
And they travel, this is a unique area for that, to be honest, where you don't see it, which is what attracted us to look in this area in the first place.
Have you dealt with FAA before?
They have, they have a, we have a contract with the Oxford Regional Airport right now. We have an eight to nine million dollar project that will go in around the airport and we're in negotiation with another municipal airport as well.
Are you familiar with that project?
At the airport?
No, at the one that's operational right now, I'm getting to a point. Have you, I don't want to put you in a spot you can't answer something, that's all.
No, I'll let you, I'll say.
This project is under construction right now, is it, your project, is it going to require? Because we're assuming there's going to be a moratorium of things that cannot be dug up again after this project is complete. So the sites that you've looked at currently that are being dug and reworked, are we going to be, is the airport going to be a suitable site knowing a moratorium's on the way?
I would say yes, based on what we've seen.
Okay, that's good, thank you.
Now he's saying two different, maybe I'm confused, he's saying he's going to Chick Hill, Keith to Chick Hill to Chick Hill, and you're talking about the airport, are we talking about two different things?
Two different potential sites here.
Two different potential sites, yeah.
Well, you could put it all up at Chick Hill, because three-phase, you'd spit and hit it almost from one angle.
Yeah, it is, and even the airports basically through the tree box in there as well. Again, if there is interest in looking into this further and you express that, again, the next steps would be for us to present the town with a sample lease agreement contract and look at that and then again, maybe sit down and discuss lease rates as well at that point. And then until you sign the contract is an obligation at that point.
Well, I think I could speak to the board and say we are interested. The board has expressed interest right from the get-go on solar and trying to address the needs of the community and see how we can help mitigate some of our higher electrical costs. We, in all fairness, we have in front of us tonight also another list of, sequence of steps that was presented to us before. Is this anybody here from SGNH tonight?
Oh, that was me, sorry.
Oh, that's you, oh, I apologize, I saw Dirigo, I didn't realize that.
I have my own company as well, but I do, I'm helping with our industry and working as a consultant, sorry.
Okay, good. Any questions from the audience? Dennis?
There's a lot to this, you're going to see these things going in the long run, but we hooked up quite a few of them. There's one over in, if you want to look at one of those, there's one over at Mon Higgin, over in Greenwood. Basically, they're going to put solar panels out and you can put them on the airport, you get them approved. But I think what we should do is number one, let's see if the town wants to do this. Number two, find out what land we have available in town, let's do this. Then we should put it out on RFP because there are other companies besides his that are in this business and it's going to get better because they're going to start subsidizing more. You're going to see more push towards solar power and wind power. So to take advantage, you know, best for the town, I think you definitely should form a group that's going to look into this and understand that this is a competitive thing. He even told you about his competitive prices. And one thing I didn't hear about, he was talking about CMP prices, now the prices, remember, there's nothing he can do about the delivery charge, you're going to pay that to CMP. You can only do anything about the kilowatt charge. And so your price, whether you're getting includes the delivery charge, now he can't do a negotiated delivery charge anymore. He can only negotiate a kilowatt charge, because that's all he controls.
Right.
So, but there's a lot to this thing, so it's something I don't think you just want to jump into before you take a look into it.
Just to make you feel a little bit better about this, we are going through and others are asking other people to come to the plate as well too, so it's just not a one or two company. I want you to feel better about that, Keith?
Just wanted to clarify, obviously, depending on your footprint that you develop, 10 acre, 20 acre, 30 acre, obviously you have the power output that you generate from that. The town may or may not consume that whole generation. So I'm sure you're looking at contracting through rather individuals throughout the community to utilize that power too.
Correct, that's correct.
Anybody else?
It'd be low on the hill, so you wouldn't see it from coming down into town, you wouldn't see the reflection and stuff.
No, no, they make them all with mirrors now and that thing's flexed so it hits Route 4 as they're coming out all over.
One of the things that we would be able to do is present a topographical overlay of the area with the arrays essentially superimposed on there and to get some idea, like, yeah, there is some glare. That is an airport issue that you have to deal with, is the glare issue as well. And I will reiterate, Dennis was correct, this is for our pricing negotiation on the net metering is for energy only. We have no control over CMP charges because you're still paying us with your original contract.
Coach?
I don't really have any idea what I'm talking about, so I just thought I shot them off. I just thought I'd ask the question, I know the windmills are sitting down there on 17 and the, what do I want to say, Ben? They can't get the power onto the lines, the transmission lines won't carry the power. Do the, would the transmission lines from here be able to carry it? I'm assuming you wouldn't put them up, but I'm not going to assume anything.
We would have to do a feasibility study and look at potential line upgrades and see what that would be.
So that's big bucks?
Quite to us, yeah.
Well, is it to you or is it to CMP and us?
If it's, if the lines don't have the feasibility or the capacity to carry what we need, it might not be a viable project in the future.
Depending on what they're generating at, the lines that are there now probably could handle it, but it's not a big, they're basically after upgrade from main street to the F1. Up the voltage, just.
So it wasn't that though?
No, no, any questions, big question.
Can I ask you a question? Who is, who are you selling to? Are you, are you, you're just a wholesaler?
We're just a wholesaler and we'll be...
You go up to bid to numerous companies that are buying it?
This will be a net metering project versus one of the CMP-mandated contracts, so we would negotiate net metering contracts with other entities and those would be combined with our projects overall as well, not necessarily just specifically this project.
And it would be a separate contract that you'd have with the town? And that could be any town, entity in town that would buy a house or the town office or whatever?
If the town itself negotiates it, any aspect of the town that is paid through the town of Rangelay would be able to receive the net metering discount.
And would that, obviously that's going to fluctuate in cost of electricity over time, but you said the contract would be for how long?
30 years.
30 years, so.
Or the lease agreement will be 30 years.
There'd be a stipulation there that rates will drop down depending on the cost of the fair market value of this?
I have not negotiated contracts with these specifically, but in the past, when I've seen other contracts, there's always been a built-in rate escalator or de-escalator depending upon the scenario with some sort of review at least every couple of years. If they were basing it on wholesale market prices with just the differential, then it would rise and fall with those prices as well. And I can't answer you as to how they specifically design them.
Well, the PUC basically gets for the standard offer, they search for bids. Now, if that standard offer can fluctuate up and down and you're going to be controlled by the PUC if you sell the kilowatts, are you able to sell under that standard offer rate?
I can't answer that. I know with the legislation that was just signed, prior to this, the net metering output capacity that people could produce for projects was very low, I think it was 500 KW or less. This allows much larger projects. Excuse me, I'm told that the PUC will set some rate margins that we will be guided by at that point. They may not come out till probably next summer that we see those. So initially, how we would set this up with the town, if they were to move forward, say with us in particular, is that we would establish the lease agreement and then an offer of right of first refusal for the net metering contract. So you would be first in line once those rates are established to set up a contract.
Just one more thing, in your contract, is there something in there about, you know, say the subsidies go away, equipment becomes old and, or you just go out of business? One outlet with all these, these solar plants, right now we have a cable TV company in town that's left us with wires and stuff all over the poles and no one to remove it and they're defunct. There's nobody there to take it down. What protection does the town have against that kind of thing?
There is, the only part I can answer specifically right now, and I can get more answers for you, is that as part of the lease agreement, at the end of the lease period, we are responsible for dismantling and decommissioning of the system and that goes into the lease agreement. I have seen cases with PUC-mandated issues where they make the entity establish an escrow account in advance that would cover decommissioning, I don't know if that's the case, but...
They did with the cable, but it's not enough money to take it down. But thanks for your...
Sure.
Any other questions from the audience? How about you, John, anybody over there?
I just have a question, if, say the town put this on the airport or on the treatment land and it never left the site and it fed power to what we need on both of those, does that still have to run through CMP? Do we still have to pay a delivery charge for what's never leaving our land?
You can, it's your own utility without being regulated by the PUC.
Right, there's been some isolated cases when I was plant manager over at Straton Energy who did that. But yeah, Dennis is absolutely correct, there are criteria for that about, you know, crossing right-ofways, you have to be a buddy neighbors, there's a whole series. That would be unlikely, I never say never, but that would probably be unlikely.
Well, I just, I know my daughter and son-in-law live in Amesbury, Mass. and he put panels on his roof. And right now, if they're generating more electricity they can use and in the summertime, in the wintertime, they draw off that excess and he hasn't had any electric bill since he put these on there. So I wonder what's different about Massachusetts than what you described.
Well, on a residential place too, it's very common to put in batteries and battery banks to supplement nighttime usage and that sort of thing. There is no battery storage to speak of going in this type of project. It's, in a lot of respects, like the windmills, the windmills produce when the winds blow in and they, not so much when they don't. The output is based on averages, knowing what the technology can produce and based on weather averages for, you know, daylight hours and sunny days and that sort of thing is how these projects are looked at as a whole. And, you know, as developers, you're putting literally millions of dollars into these projects so they're not, they're well researched before you put them in. And again, I will reiterate that if you guys want to move forward, look at a lease agreement, discuss some pricing, we'll do that. If you were to sign the lease agreement, we would then do a feasibility study that would dig in deep onto the site specifically and make sure that we could actually do the project before they move forward.
Anything else from the board?
No, I happen to have that, I happen to have that article about your project in Oxford and everything that entails, so, but they are, it's, this is an eight to nine million dollar project that you guys have put money into. I just realized I had it.
Again, we do, we have about seven or eight projects on the board, as a, as a whole, we deal in several. whole, we deal in seven different states, and obviously including Maine. We're a Maine-based office. I'm Portland, moving to Thalmud pretty quick, but, and I've been a third-year resident at Dallas Plantation, so I've been around here as well. And part of my objective was it seemed like a decent opportunity for the town and with my background.
With that many projects on the board, are you properly capitalized with this size?
I mean, we are. Our actual solar partner is a group called BNRG out of Dublin Island, and they've done these solar projects all over the world. One other thing I will say too with regard to Ransley as a site, obviously the further north you get, the less efficient the projects become. But nonetheless, in looking at the topography of Chick Hill and the airport, initial indications are that they would be feasible sites for a proper project. That's what I want to say.
Thank you, Steve. Appreciate you coming away tonight.
Thank you, dear. Thank you.
Next up, review and approve meetings from July 15.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the July 15, 2019 regular meeting minutes with any additions or corrections.
Second.
Any additions or corrections?
I agree with you.
Yes.
Did we talk about cell towers and select work communication last week?
Yeah, we did, and somehow it slipped. I'll have it on for the next one.
No, I just, I was curious, because it wasn't in the minutes and it wasn't on the agenda.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else? On the favor?
All opposed, thank you.
July 22.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the July 22, 2019 special meeting minutes with any corrections or additions.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any corrections? On the favor? All opposed, thank you. Public to speak under non-agenda items. If you have something to say that's not on the agenda, direct it to me and we'll get you going. No hands. Boards and committees, Airport Commission met on June 5th. That's in your packet. They did nominate, I believe, was it after you got Larry back on board as chairman, is that correct? Or you haven't done that yet? But you waited for that, correct?
There was a, they decided they didn't want to pick a chairman, but because Larry was off the board at that time, and you did the following meeting, we folks put him back on the board, and the Airport Commission hasn't met since then.
Okay, thank you. Consent items, liquor license. Wait a minute, we're going to do that one again.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the liquor license renewal for MSPNG Inc. doing business with Sarge's Sports Club and... Second.
See, everything is all, I'm not going to bust you chops anymore. Any questions on that liquor license? All in favor? All opposed.
Thank you.
Crystal, there's a...
Thank you, my good, I want to get my kids, and all I have to say is, before the next meeting, I'll get you a Sarge's sticker for your Yeti cup, Steve.
Thank you, dear.
Thanks, brother.
Let me turn that around here, I'll wait on...
No room.
Hey, Crystal, event permit, Western Mountain Shrine.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the event permit application from the Western Mountain Shrine Club for a parade to take place on August 10th between 2:00 and 3:00 PM.
Second.
Any questions? Comments? All in favor? You have a question?
I do. It's request of the police chief that we have no parking from the whole event from Ransley and to, believe me, I want to hear your take on it before I follow through with that or chose to do so.
The entire Main Street?
Entire Main Street, both sides.
It's the cars, right? The cars that go?
Correct.
It's what's been done in years prior.
Yeah, I was going to say, I do recall there not being cars there before, then suddenly there were cars there again.
I remember.
We've been on both ways.
I guess my first question is, is it necessary to take away all that parking? I mean, I could understand one side of the road, but I'm asking.
I can't give you an honest answer. My opinion, I mean, I think that I've seen it both ways, if I remember growing up. I guess it depends on public safety in regards to anybody that can come out of control with those cars, if you want to go hypothetical there, potential air of...
Well, this year we've got all parallel parking.
Correct, so you have more room.
So there's more room.
But we did have issues with this years ago, I remember.
Yeah.
During the parades, people just, you know, walking across the street, stuff like that, and...
Is the fire chief in charge of safety, ground safety, is he like the safety officer or something? Do you have his take on it? Does he have an opinion?
I haven't talked, because I trust everybody as far as I can.
And we won't have another meeting before this takes place.
Correct. I need to look at it.
Are you comfortable with this in your hands, John?
Well, safety issue, possible.
All right, then how about we do it conditionally upon the town manager talking to the fire chief and police chief?
Do which conditionally? Put the comments?
We'll approve the permit.
As...
Conditioned upon getting safety approved by the fire chief and the police chief with John.
I mean, if both of them recommend...
Do it, I think we'll do it.
...no parking during the parade, I would go with their recommendation.
I would as well.
Here on the side of caution.
Yeah.
Should we change the motion to?
Yeah, I will. I got one more hand out there. Yeah. No, that's all right.
Take it to the person.
Yes.
I think they usually, the day before, on Friday, have put up signs saying, "No parking on this side of the street."
Yeah, yeah.
For a certain, it's like a three-hour walk or something like that. 11 to 1, I don't know, whatever time of the parade is.
Don't know, we know how it's done.
It's an hour for the parade, and then there's an hour on either side. So it's like a, I think a three-hour window that they...
So again, if we could just change the motion to make it conditional upon safety issues being addressed by the town manager.
So mandated.
How about the second?
Second.
All right, all in favor of that with you, ma'am? Thank you. Okay, let's see. Trail Town Festival.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the tail of that Trail Town Festival on Haley Pond and Han Street on August 31st, 10 to 4.
Second.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. Questions? Concerns? All in favor? Thank you. Northwoods Gravel Grind.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the event permit application for the Northwoods Gravel Grind to start and end an A.J. cycles to take place on September 14th from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions? Comments? All in favor? All right, we have, in your packet you have two names for a school board. One is withdrawn. We have a letter supporting the nomination, the request for Deborah Ladd. I'll read the supporting letter to you from Martha Thompson, Title 1, RT1 Intervention, that's her title. To whom it may concern is, my understanding, this Monday at the August 5th meeting, they will appoint a new member to our Ransley Lakes Regional School Board Director. I am an employee of RLRS and a resident of Ransley. I would like to encourage you to appoint Debbie Ladd for this position. I have spoken with Mrs. Ladd, and she is excited and enthused to be part of our school community. Mrs. Ladd is a retired teacher and principal. She understands education and its challenges in our fast-paced world. I find Mrs. Ladd easy to talk to, approachable, and a great listener. I feel that with her experience and her positive energy, that she would be a great advocate for our students. Thank you, Martha Thompson. I'd like to also add that I've had numerous conversations with Mrs. Ladd, and I concur with that letter of recommendation. She's in the audience if the board would like to ask her a question. Would you like to introduce yourself, young lady?
I'd be happy to all stand up because you probably can't see me sitting down. Debbie Ladd, we've lived here three years. We live on the damn road, it's not a swear, it's really a road here in Ransley. But I taught, I started life as an ed tech in Mars Hill, Maine. Taught in Milo, I taught on Dr. Isle for a year, and then I did three years as a principal at Seddon-Moore Middle School in Nova Foxborough. Twenty-six of those years, somewhere in the mix, I was a teacher at SAD 53, which is Pittsfield, learned in Detroit. Taught everything from kindergarten through high school, adult ed biology. Finished up my career in Hammers Island, South Carolina, at a little independent school where I learned very different sort of education takes place south of the Masonic Center. But very interested, I have no agenda here, no children in the schools here, but I really think this place is quite a gem, and people who know about it know about that, so happy to be here.
Any questions from the board?
I make a motion, we approve the request for appointment for Deborah Ladd. I don't have a term here.
One year.
For one year for the Ransley School Board.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor? Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks for stepping out.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
It, it's gratifying, because, you know, when we go into elections and we see nothing on the ballot, we all scratch our heads a little bit, it's all right, but thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, Airport Reserve AWAS, John?
We've all read the recommendation from Stan Tech. A little interesting, because we have to replace the AWAS system, and the initial estimate we had was like $300,000 to pay. And so this recommendation is if we did it ourselves without FAA, the cost would be $131,000, because we don't have to follow FAA guidelines or however, that doubles the price is beyond me, but that's, that's what we're told here. And, but if you look at it like, okay, we're saving money from $300,000 to $131,000, yeah, we're saving money. But are we saving money? Because if we do it ourselves, we're going to pay out $131,000, $650. If we do it through the normal process, it may take a little longer, and there might be more issues, but we're responsible for only 5%. So 5% of $300,000 is like $15,000 is what the town's cost would be, and, you know, 90% would be the federal government, and the state would be responsible for $15,000. I did notice we had a letter of support from the state, it looked like, supporting this recommendation from Stan Tech.
Of course.
So, there's a, you know, that's a case where, are we saving money or are we saving money? I don't know. That's something you folks will have to decide. I guess the recommendation from the Airport Committee is to go with this recommendation, and we can immediately start putting together the AWAS system. So, you know, so what do you do? And how are you going to look at it?
I look at it pretty simply, as we talked about earlier. I would, I would very much support a $15,000 expenditure for the town of Ransley versus $131,000.
And then you absolutely know it's done correctly.
Bingo.
I give you no brain.
I mean, it sounds like the same, that Stanwick Avionics would be used regardless, because they're sole source now.
Yeah.
So it's not like we would be sacrificing quality. Is it just the fact that it can get started sooner? I mean, we're without an AWAS system right now.
I believe so, yeah.
And we'd be able to, so as opposed to, so how long would we wait if, because at this point, we're looking at spending the money that we've made from the project that has been received from FAA for the fourth count.
So that total is expected to be about $600,000. And I believe we started the year with $150,000 in that fund, which is, which was, you know, and every year the FAA has to kick in $150,000.
That's the entitlement funds.
So certainly the money's there, no question about it. We've already received at least half of that money, you know, from you and our gravel from Chick Hill.
In my opinion, we need to have our, have our crew talk to Washington, find out what the timeframe is before...
It might be a year because...
Well, it might be, but the FAA is going to get pressure from Life Flight and every other organization that needs to get in and out of here after this airport's open. AWAS is an integral part of that, so we may get it sooner than a year.
Yeah, a little leper, so.
What do you think? I still don't want to spend $120,000 just because of expediency. I don't know about anybody else, but...
I like you're using it as a moment anyway, so.
Correct.
I'm into saving $115,000.
All right, so can I read this, Steve?
Yes, please.
Without all the federal requirements associated with AIP funding, the project cost will be significantly less than the estimated three, but most likely under $140,000. No need for contract specifications and plans, no need for a construction, safety, and phasing plan, no need for multiple bid quotes, no Davis Bacon wage rates or other federal requirements, no grant administration or other FAA and MDOT grant requirement, no engineering costs. The project can move forward immediately with just a phone call to Bill Stanwick. The town is generating force account revenue from the runway project, so local funds are available. AIP entitlements will be preserved for the master plan update and repayment to Wiscasset, which I think is about $59,000.
$53,000, yeah.
Something like that. And AIP entitlements will also be preserved for apron and taxiway improvements to accommodate hangar growth. So, this is, these are recommendations from Bill Garrish, who is the person with dealing with...
So conversation with Mr. Stanwick and Washington could say, "Look, pay for it out of the force account upfront, because we don't see saying no at a federal level. We'll run this through the, through the wringer then." You know, if they can get a verbal, "Sure, this has worked before, no problem, let's keep going," versus just cut him a check and never ask the question? I'm not in terms of that. I want some conversation with the FAA. How about the rest of you?
Well, we want to do it for the cheapest amount. I mean, it makes the most sense, but the compensation has to be had, because sometimes things that make the most sense don't make the most sense.
Correct. Sidney?
Yeah, I think just getting more information at this point. We don't need to make a decision tonight, do we?
No, I accept that it's not working, like you said.
Yeah.
We can't wait till, no, we have another...
We have another August one, so, yeah, and the runway's still closed, so.
Tony?
The runway is still closed, can't do this.
Right. Can't do anything. Dave?
Definitely waiting.
Okay. Thank you, John.
I'll take the beat. I think the day won't matter to us since probably in comparison, but you have to assume that there's obviously a value to what we have. So, I mean, the $131 with Stan Tech versus the 15 with FAA, but I mean, it's got to be a retail value that we have currently for an AWAS system. So, I mean, that could be part of that cost recapture or that expenditure recapture. I would imagine, probably we're at the same conversation, is what's the retail value of this equipment that we currently have? Because I know other airports have it. It's harder to find parts, obviously, but now you have more parts at hand. So, it's going to be returned there somewhere.
Ross?
The other question is, can you ride the short-term horse out in reach for the long-term?
Yeah, that's what, that's a conversation we want to have with the FAA. Right. Yep. Thank you, John. Airport Hangar Unit 1, a transfer from Mr. Frank Ketti to Mr. Wegman. Need a motion to approve the transfer from one owner to another. Elect Atlas Wegman is purchasing Kevin Frank Ketti's membership interest in the Ransley Pilots Association. Pilots Association, T-hanger Unit Number One. Board of Selectmen will need to vote to approve this transfer and sign the attached document. I need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I hope that we approve the transfer of Unit Number One from, oh, Kevin Frank Ketti. Kevin Franchet.
Frank Ketti.
Franchet.
Franchet, it says, to Atlas Wegman.
I'll second it. Any questions? Comments? All in favor? Thank you. Is that yes? Oh, you, is there so many other?
No.
Oh, okay.
It was a yea.
John, L R A P authorized town manager to sign.
That's local road assistance money, the state pays that, it's usually about thirty-two thousand dollars. Although, I don't know what's with their form, but this form says last year's L R A P funds, thirty-five thousand, six twelve. And this year, it says...
Thirty-two.
The L R A P allocation for the new fiscal year in twenty is going up about two-point-six percent for last year, but the estimate for us is thirty-two thousand, so kind of opposite of what, what they're telling us here on the same form.
We'll take it.
So it's always in the thirty-two thousand range.
Scary that state map.
And shows that we spent on capital approval, but you have to show where you spend the thirty-two thousand, whatever it is they give you, and it has to be used for construction, not just like minor, you know, like sign painting lines, that kind of thing. So we had a hundred and ninety-eight thousand, four fifty on Pleasant Street, we had two hundred and seventy-four thousand, one twenty-five on Bald Mountain, and combined with some small projects, we had a total of eight hundred and seven thousand, seven forty-three, forty-five. So I think, I like to list all of that, because it shows the state, you're giving us thirty-two thousand, and it's costing us eight hundred thousand, just to put it in, you know. So if you do, if we do this every year, we could, we could get away with just simply putting in a fund, we're saving it for future use, but you have to account for all that money, so, not a lot, but it does help.
Need a motion to accept that, Mike?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Authorized me to sign.
You do, yes. We do?
Yeah.
Okay, yes, yes. Shannon, make a motion.
Will you allow the town manager to sign the main D O T local road assistance program?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. We have a number of letters from, from citizens, starting with Kurt O'Hare and the Dark Sky. I just want to paraphrase this one. He's thanking the town for managing a great town with friendly people, he'll be back next year, he's been spending summers up here for a number of years, and he likes the fact that there are photographic opportunities for tourism, and suggests you look into getting certified as an official Dark Sky area. The letter is available here at the town office. Second up is Rose Collins, a list of items for consideration. Rose is here, so I'd like to just address, she has four items. In no particular order of importance, we seem to have a goodly amount of shale available on Chick Hill. We have a town grader and some dump trucks and personnel. I think with very little expense, we might be able to grade the crown off the dirt trails in the cemetery and avail ourselves to the shale on Chick Hill to make decent roads in the cemetery to go with the cleaned-up headstones. We brought this up with Keith, and the material that's up at Chick Hill is not suitable for that, it would be giving you flat tires like crazy. But, the item that you're bringing up in terms of grading that road and getting it flat, is not going to be ignored, I'll pass that along to Trish. So, item number two, I had attended a meeting improvements of the park in Ransley and heard the veterans say they did not want the town to fancy up their monument. I don't know, the rest of, I'll read the whole thing. Say they didn't want the town to... I asked if possibly the town might show, somehow obtain the Furbush Garden plot and put the veterans' memorial on that site. Everyone was in favor of such a move, but few thought it was possible. Well, perhaps the Smith Haley family would consider some sort of donation and tax relief now that they own that parcel. I would hope that the deed might be conditioned so that the town would maintain the garden and a veterans' memorial on that site with appropriate signage. I'd almost like you to be the head of that committee and go to the Haley's, and, only because it's, it's, it's not the town's spot to mess with the veterans. I talked it over with the town manager, and he concurred, but thank you. But if you want to go for it, Rose, rock and roll, I mean...
Well, you know, the veterans thought that was a great idea, when, when we were all sitting around talking about the improvements to a park, and they didn't want, I think they didn't want their memorial moved, because they were afraid they'd lose it.
Yeah, yeah.
And maybe now, something has changed, and...
Cindy?
It could happen. More?
It was during, we had public hearings regarding, you know, each phase of the park, and with great public presence from the veterans in the area that were involved with, you know, the current setup, and they were, they were pretty adamant, they, they want things to stay just...
We were going to put benches and flowers and stuff they like.
They were, they were like, this is, you know, it's, it's easily accessible, it's right there in town, they really liked that it was a focal point, and they, they, they worked hard, I mean, that was the, what they told us, they worked hard in setting it up.
But we did talk about that garden, and they did like that idea.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's all I have to say.
Did you have something to add to that, or you're good?
Yeah, they, what they said is, I was at the meeting, they didn't want anything done, that's the town with us, man, fifty hundred thousand fixing that up, they didn't want anything to do with it.
Rose brings up another good point, item number three, extending the launch ramp, the, the boat ramp at Haynes Landing, using the cement pads left over from the park work in Ransley. Either has cement pads left over?
I have no idea. I'm just hearing.
All right, if there are, she brings up a good point. Being a resident of that lake, if you go to use that, it has the same problems, Keith, as Ransley had, with boats trying to gun the engine to get out, there's a massive hole in there, where a VW could disappear and probably help the boats getting it out. So if there is something that can help mitigate that problem...
Isn't that private property?
There is a state boat ramp.
Oh, they're talking that, that, well, that's...
But we did have a problem back, I don't remember how many years ago, we were going to extend that out, but it blocked one of their rental slips.
Yeah, there, what, what Cindy's referring to now is that is on its way to privacy, isn't there yet? Maybe, there's others in the room who know more about the inner workings of that than I, but there is some changes going on there.
The documentums?
And the transfers of ownership and how it's all going to plush out after...
It's, it's private.
Yeah, yeah, but again, private in the sense that, that there's still a public boat launch there, that is not going to be private, and never will be. It's owned by the state, and it's maintained by, I didn't let her choose it, why?
The town spent hundreds of thousands of dollars dealing with that in the lawsuit, and finally got a public boat ramp, so that you can launch those without going on private property.
Correct, correct. And finally, since I see no chance, the school will initiate the purchase of the Mendolia property for playing fields, I'd like to suggest that we find the money to buy it. I am also going to appoint you to the head of that committee. Good point, it has been brought up here to the board in, in months past.
I brought it up for years, it's just so silly, it's a hundred and eighty-five thousand, you know, without negotiating anything, and it's flat.
Agreed, agreed. I'll talk with you a little bit later on, Rose, about what has been suggested for that, let you know, okay? Any other comments on that? Next is Peter Goodwin. Peter Goodwin writes, I understand that the board of selectmen will be discussing the abandoned or dangerous properties at the upcoming August fifth, two thousand and nineteen meeting. Susan and I are now owners of Forty-three Hotel Road and are carrying on the many years of passion for the Courtel Hodgkins property there. Sue, Dawn and Sue Hodgkins, Susan's parents, and before that, B J Cartrell, have owned the property since the fifties. The adjacent property has been an eyesore and in hazardous condition for twenty years, with structures falling in, equipment with potentially oil, gas, and products potentially leaking into the ground. We have a deep well and a backup dug well for our drinking water, and the situation on the adjacent property could possibly be causing unknown contamination. As taxpayers and longtime owners of the property, we support the town in taking action against these dangerous situations and support any work needed to improve the structures and associated potentially harmful chemicals and equipment, please feel free to contact me.
It's more than just a house, Chris, it's got a couple of buildings in the back.
Yep, yep. And then the next one is Nick Sampson, revision energy follow-up. We had a presentation not too long ago, and we asked Nick Sampson to give us steps that we could follow and how to move forward with revision energy. I wrote a little note to Cindy today, tonight, saying that it seems to me, this is my opinion, I haven't asked the entire board, after listening to Steve's presentation tonight and having this one, and listening to Dennis's concerns, and you're all concerned that it might be good to form a committee that looks at solar for the community and goes through the process necessary to do, do it the right way for the town of Ransley. If there is no objection from my colleagues, let's talk about this at, you have, you ready to say something?
Yeah, I just have, once you're through, I just have a suggestion.
I'm done.
So, where Nick has, has provided kind of a guideline to his approach would be, which would involve financing and whatnot, why can't, we should probably have Steve and Dirigo Energy provide some similar, similar footprints, so we can compare.
Full disclosure, there is a copy of that one.
And, because that, this doesn't involve leasing or anything like that, this involves the town and setting up a solar array that, you know, feeds a specific location, so...
We also, Steve, so that you know, got a presentation from Dubois King regarding how to go about this at the airport, they've done all the projects alike and similar, and after that proposal, Cindy brought up the idea of getting it to the entire community, which certainly isn't new, but, you know, Cindy is, was the one at the forefront of this, and, and I think we've learned a lot, and a lot of questions have come up, since these other two presentations, yours being one of them, and I think it's important that, you know, I just hate to see time keep marching on, because, you know, the building season is short around here.
So, let me just reiterate, if there are any questions or things that you think of as a group after that you would like us to answer, just, John has our email address, I think Cindy does too, and just forward us the question, and we'll try to get you some response.
Thank you, thank you. Any other comments from the board? Nothing on the...
So as far as a committee size, um, small?
Absolutely, absolutely. Let's, let's talk about the committee, what I, yeah, thanks for bringing that up again. Let's, everybody give me your ideas on what you'd like to do with that, and you're writing, or call me, or email me, or whatever, and then the, the next meeting will formulate that.
Three to five people, for one thing.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't need eighteen people.
Dennis Lee, we don't even know how...
Well, Dennis would be the obvious choice.
Are you, would you be willing, guys?
This is a word, and this guy here is a pretty fresh out, too.
Okay? Okay? Anything else? Tony? Nothing on the downtown revitalization update, Allen Street update.
Oh, God.
In your packet, or, excuse me, on the desk here, you have what we received here. John and Keith is here, John is here, and so on, a lot of material that you just got tonight. Do you want to hit the highlights, John and Keith, or do you want us to take a week and two weeks and look this over? What do you, what's your recommendation?
The highlight, we don't have near enough money to do all the projects that we had estimated originally.
Okay.
Two-point-one million dollars doesn't go as far as it might have ten years ago. So, Keith and I sat down with Jeff Preble, Roy Pearce, and we were able to, the low bid on Allen Street was a million, seven seventy-four, seven forty-three, with the, you know, back when Joe Roach was originally estimating all these roads, it was like seven hundred and fifty thousand, or this was more than double what the actual bid was, and I might point out, the million, seven seventy-four, which turned out to be the low bid, the next bid was two billion, five, and the next million was three million something. So, quite a, quite a variation in the bids.
Well, one wants a job, and the other one didn't.
Apparently. The other one just wanted to retire. So, we're talking with Jeff, we were able to defer some items, like the finished pavement that could be done at a later time. We subtracted out three hundred and twenty-six thousand, which would be the water district share. And pretty much brought that down to a million, three hundred and nineteen thousand, one sixty-eight. So we're still, you know, quite a bit higher than, you know, what we had estimated, but we have a million, three hundred and eleven thousand that we have not spent yet out of that. So you could do, you could sign this contract and do this job, and then you can't do anything else. But now, what's also in your packet, is we did get notice from our two U.S. senators that the Northern Borders Grant has been approved for five hundred thousand dollars. Combine that with the M D O T grant of another five hundred thousand, we thought we were in good shape, but it looks like we might need more than another half a million dollars for the town's share of that, because, because of the way the prices have been coming on the bids. Let's see what else I got here. So what we handed you tonight, that Keith's been working on, is just a kind of an educated estimate of what remains to be done. So Allen Street, a million, four thirty-one, and that, the difference there between that is the engineering for administrative and site work. Bald Mountain Road, four hundred and eight, seven oh five, so that includes the finished pavement, and it includes our share of those two box culverts. We also got word that we received both grants for ninety-five thousand each for each one of those box culverts that are needed on those street crossings, so. So just last week, we got notice, five hundred thousand from the federal government, and a hundred and eighty thousand from the state for those two culverts. But we still need four hundred and eight thousand to finish the job and put the finished paving on, so. And then we've got all the small roads here that, you know, I think, given the deficits that we have, these could certainly wait a year or two or three, some of them, some might have to be, you know, patched, but Cottage Avenue, eighty-six thousand, Guile Road, forty-five thousand, Hyatt Road, thirty-three, Pixford, twenty-six thousand, Transfer Station Road, thirty-five thousand, Bonny Point Road, fifty-one thousand, so, just those alone, we're looking at two million, one sixteen, one sixty, thirty-two. And then we, we've got a finished Lake Street and Fuller, and those are estimated at about twenty-five thousand, that's just, all that's left there is the finished pavement. Moon Lake Road, we're looking at three million, one fifteen, eight eighteen, and what we tried to do is, Moon Lake Road is at least twice as far as Allen Street, a little over a mile, and so we took the low bid and the unit prices and tried to, you know, get a reasonable estimate. We just bid Allen Street, you know, certainly the gravel, the pavement, the ditching, you know, a lot of that's going to be a similar unit prices. So we tried to come up with a reasonable estimate, so, three million, one hundred and fifteen thousand, eight eighteen... So, three million one hundred fifteen thousand eight eighteen, and take from that the million dollars from both, you know, half a million from the federal and the state, we're looking at having to have another two million. Part of that application was fifty thousand dollars from M&amp;H as a public-private partnership. And our share of the overlooked sidewalk, based on what DOT might be dealing with on other projects, we're looking at town share of two hundred sixty-six thousand six thirty-five. And Keith, what was our original share of that?
About one twenty-five.
One twenty-five, and the state was going to pick up the rest, but I don't know that they'll, you know, still allow us the one twenty-five.
Current language was eighty percent up to five hundred.
It's eighty, eighty, eighty-twenty, so.
Right.
Five hundred thousand original estimate is now up to six something, I think you mentioned it.
Right, yep.
And then Alpine Way, a hundred seventeen thousand, so you're looking at three million five twenty-four. Looking at a total road cost, the town's share of five million six hundred forty-one thousand. So money we have available, five hundred from the MPI grant, Northern Border Grant, five hundred thousand, M&amp;H, fifty thousand, road loan balance, a hundred thirty-one, a million three hundred eleven thousand seventy-two. And there's more of a breakdown on each project, what's required, and how we get our... So one of the things that we talked about was with M&amp;H, who's owned this year, starting on Main Street and going up as far as School Street, and we're estimating that that cost might be total of seven hundred twenty-one thousand, so six eighty-four for construction and thirty-seven thousand for construction administration and inspection. So if you consider authorizing that to at least get a portion of that road started, because given the season now, unlikely they're going to get beyond that anyway, because winter's going to hit. So you've got a seven hundred twenty-one thousand cost on that portion of the road up to School Street, and that would allow us to also do the project on Bald Mountain and also finish Lake Street and Fuller Street. And that would be, you know, we would have enough money with the a million seven of a million three that we still have in the whole. But then we'd have to figure out how much more money we need to borrow for next year. So one of the things that is on, on Street Four, I have, and this has all the roads that we've completed, and apparently the construction loan payment was set at two hundred forty-eight thousand four hundred eighty-four dollars and sixty-four cents per year until April seventeenth, twenty twenty-eight. So that's roughly ten years, and the last payment on November of twenty twenty-eight would be seventy-three thousand. And we're supposed to pay those annual payments from the excise tax, and the average excise tax collection over the last four years was three hundred and thirty-seven thousand nine fourteen. So it's, on average, eighty-nine thousand more per year from the excise tax, so. And the article voted at town meeting the last two years in a row, is the, all the excise tax revenue has to go into a road fund for future road construction projects. So there's an available extra eighty-nine thousand each year for, you know, the next ten years. It's not going to cover the whole deficit, but it'll, you know, be a help. We also get the DOT money, thirty-two thousand, and that to the eighty-nine, it's over a hundred thousand each year you could dedicate to continuing on with some of the smaller roads. We still have to figure out, you know, go in a town meeting and ask some of the people to borrow more money. So that's the bad news. The good news is, everybody loves a newly built road. I guarantee you that. It saves you all money without having to replace your shocks.
So if we did, if we did from Main Street to School Street, you've got enough time to get it all done?
Well, I think so, unless you have...
And if you, everything is good with those water company and sewer and everything else, they're all set with...
I'll defer to Al for four questions.
Yes, we're ready.
Keith?
Yes?
Wanted to point out one thing in regards to Moon Lake Road as part of this equation is, those numbers are obviously strictly my numbers based on Allen Street figure on your feet. With that, though, my point is, the nineteenth for the next meeting, Eric Lobell and Mainland would like to have a public information prior to the scheduled meeting, and what they'll have is, they'll actually have their preliminary estimate for the road, so you'll actually probably see, you might, you'll see a better figure or a truer figure to what their estimate would be compared to mine, so. In regards to the Moon Lake Road, obviously.
And we don't have any quantities, unit quantities yet, to really be able to sit down, because the other thing keep in mind is, the fifty thousand dollars from M&amp;H would make it, so it would be like a salt source without bidding there. Well, the only thing we have that's reasonable is to sit down with M&amp;H and go through what we know was their low bid, and sit down and compare road to road and come out with a reasonable price for them doing that job. So that, I think, I think because they were low bid on Allen Street, that gives us a real tool to figure out what it's going to cost to do, you know, what we've already decided. I mean, they certainly, by that fifty thousand helped us get that five hundred that was part of the application process, so.
Right. Any questions from the board?
First, we meet with Mainland, first they, they will make a presentation prior to our August meeting and...
For Moon Lake, right?
For Moon Lake, yes.
Yeah, okay, let's stay on Allen Street, so we can figure out where we're going with that. Questions on Allen Street? Going from Main to School?
It's a mess, I'm about to...
I would think you'd have come up with a better price, knowing we're hitting up to your house.
Right.
You know?
Get your house paid, Tom, give mine paid.
There you go.
Can I ask this question about Down Street?
Go ahead.
The ditches have been filled in, correct?
Yeah.
And storm drains putting in. Is the sidewalk remaining where it is?
No, it's coming in.
Correct.
If you, if you're moving the sidewalk closer to the road, you really, and I've been looking at the pole stakes, you really ought to make sure that the poles are on the outside of the sidewalk, so you don't have to deal with poles in the curb line.
Yes.
You did that down at Rumpleton.
Exactly. Jeff, and that's why I had Jeff go look at that, and he met with CMT, and he met with...
Because I looked at some of the stakes, it looks like some of the stakes or the poles are going to be right where they are.
Really? Some will have to go back a foot or so, because others have to go back like three feet or four feet, something like that.
No, so you can get the sidewalk in there, and then a curb line, yeah, it'll be at the back of the sidewalk.
I know it made a huge difference in Mexico, the way on those sidewalks, boy.
For cleaning the snow in the winter times.
Yes, Keith?
I just, on that, I met with a representative of CMT last week, they're going to deliver poles for Allen Street and the Moon Lake Road this week, and then drop them at the Chithill Treatment Facility, and they'll start processing those movements right off the next week.
Okay, yes. How about it?
You got a hand.
Yes, Mark?
Just on the overview of this road cost situation, does the ten-year plan that Tim Pellerin presented, you know, with the two point one million dollars, does that mean we'll have spent all of that money in the three-year period because of the price increases and stuff that was set aside for that?
Yeah.
And that will have only have done like twenty-five percent of the roads that were in the project?
Something like that.
I don't know, but some people will find that pretty disappointing.
Well, if you, if you remember, Mark, back in one of those meetings, it was brought up, reaching that far out without a crystal ball is a difficult tool. It's not always a good thing to do.
No. In the last year, the state has not done road projects because of the cost increases on all the construction.
Right.
And the original one, Moon Lake Road wasn't in there, so that's three million dollars extra that wasn't part of that process.
Right.
So we're not, we're not that far off if you take the three million out of Moon Lake Road. If you look at this longer sheet here, it shows you the roads that are completed. Like Depot Street, roads complete, November seventeenth, seventeen thousand one thirty-five thirty, and the estimate in the budget for that road was twenty-six thousand, so it goes both ways. I mean, the actual cost compared to what was estimated can go either way, up or down. And then you've got Grand View's completed, that one, total cost...
Ninety-three.
Ninety, yeah, in November, it was a little more in December, total ninety-four seven forty-seven.
Budgeted fifty-eight.
And that one was budgeted at fifty-eight, so that was thirty-six over to do Grand View Hyatt Road, forty-one four fifty-six ninety-seven, that was estimated at fifty-seven, so that was less costly. And that, these are all complete. Pleasant Street, let's see, a hundred ninety-eight four fifty, and that was estimated at two hundred sixty thousand. So we, you know, early on, back in two thousand seventeen, we were coming in pretty good under budget. Quosic Avenue, thirty-two thousand, nine ninety-three, that was estimated at thirty-one thousand. And Robbins Avenue, thirty-seven three oh eight, that was estimated at forty-two thousand. And so those were all completed, and since then, this year, we completed Pleasant Street, I believe. Oh, that's on here. We're halfway done with Bald Mountain Road. So what's left, I mean, there's a dozen or so smaller projects, smaller roads, but we've still got the major ones to really tackle with what we have available. If you don't do the major ones while you have money to do them, you never get back to them, you know? The longer roads are the ones that get neglected because they're too much to do them, so they get neglected in favor of the limited money towns have to put it into the smaller roads. So the smaller roads usually get, you know, looked at first, but, you know, we're doing all these major dead-end roads, I think that's a good thing, because once they're done, they'll be done for a long time, so. And in this figure, it's two hundred sixty-six for overlooked sidewalks, that wasn't part of the original construction loan plan? No, that, and that's, that's an increase based on a hundred and thirty... So additional financing needs three point two million, and we're at three point one plus two sixty-six for two projects that weren't included in that, so those really are what pushed us over that much. You're add-on.
Well, I mean, Allen Street alone pushes you over.
Right, puts half the money right there.
Right.
And we need to do Allen Street. Another day goes by, somebody that lives on Allen Street doesn't find me. When are you guys going to do Allen Street?
We're taking on a major project, we're going from ditches to close...
Oh, absolute ditches.
All paperwork.
Yeah.
Of course, you got water and sewer.
All the money gone, that one's underground in the storm drains.
Stonehead, deep hatch fences.
Right.
You know, underneath the water is the problem.
Yep. Good luck. The hell's got water, as far as we can dig.
Yeah.
All downhill.
All right, give me a motion, let's move on to Allen Street.
I make a voice, like we move forward with the Allen Street project in twenty nineteen from Main Street to School Street. Second.
Moving second, and any further discussion? All up here.
I just, I'd like to thank you guys, because you're going to get me a paved road from Main Street to my driveway, and I got to go up to School Street to my driveway, so it'd be the way that I go home. But eventually, well...
You laugh, when they were, when they were doing Bald Mountain Road the last time I sat at this table, Effra Quimby's down at Haynes Landing, and people were asking, "How far are you going?" He goes, "Just to the Sleckman's place." If you don't think I didn't hear that one, everything...
Probably somebody there.
Yeah.
Probably living on Moon, Moon and Blue Road.
I was going to do that first.
Yeah. All right, that takes care of that. Moving on, new business, mechanic job, mechanical job description. John, what a...
Actually, we still have a proposal for vice mayor for the...
No, that was last week.
Oh, we did that, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, okay. Yeah, we can't seem to get a mechanic.
Well, M&amp;H just fired everybody, that's right.
We've been about six years looking for him.
I think the current, we have like five...
Three.
...with other rates. So what is the current rate at two?
Three.
Three. So we've been dealing with Anna Lee, and she's been dealing with the union rep, and they've agreed that, you know, everybody's in favor. This would have to be approved by you folks, obviously, so we would change the rate for the mechanic's position to a grade five, up from three. That alone, with the raise given started, you know, July first of this year, would allow us to pay a relatively decent rate for a mechanic. So the grade rate's a little higher, but the raise has to be even higher. And then in the grade five, there's a provision where if he's already got five years' worth of experience, then he would be eligible for longevity. That would put that rate up to like twenty dollars an hour, and Keith thinks he might be able to get someone to apply, or, you know. That with our benefits that we have, might be just what it takes to get a couple of mechanics to apply for the job. You know, that's what we're looking at, changing mechanic to a grade five, but also he'd be directly under the Public Service Director rather than through the, through Public Works. He would report to Keith. And then he's available to, you know, we're going to keep direct them to do, you know, we're going to fire truck, we're going to police car, we're going to dump truck, so. I think this, kind of, this job description that we've come up with, sets the tone for, you know, for the, all the things that he needs to do. A couple, I found a couple of typos in my copy.
Quite a few. They're terrible, of course.
I want you to copy mine for the...
Ah, you copy both.
On number six, it says ASSIS, you maintenance, so you need to add a T, assisted maintenance, on page two or five, right at the bottom.
Yeah, that's written in.
And then on page four or five...
Somebody wrote a T.
All right, so it, on four or five, about halfway down, you have to say one year of hire into the position. You have to have a fleet or a commercial vehicle, motor vehicle inspection license within one year, so those would be the type that was in there.
In your conversation with Anna Lee... In your conversation with Anna Lee, right now, currently, they supervise none, but that does not mean that it won't be in the future. So, where it says supervisors, under, next to reports to on that same page you're on, I think you should strike none and as needed, or something along those lines. So, as we move into something in the future, you have it covered, if somebody should be in there who needs to be supervised. Should be.
Oh, well, yeah, because also, if it's a two-man job and he.
Well, that's my point.
You know, there's somebody in there. Be advised of that.
Well, that should be negotiated in contract that, in addition, whatever they're assigned, and it should be negotiated in the contract that you have the opportunity to temporarily grade these guys as supervisors, so they can lead other people. But I just want to ask the question, basically, you've negotiated with the union now, so this mechanic has moved up to a grade five as far as the contract is concerned, and number two, E, designation has changed from a highway mechanic to the public works mechanic, and he reports directly to the public works director. Is that correct?
Yes.
Public service director.
Right.
Yes. Comment or just clarification?
Hopefully, that'll be enough money to ask somebody to come, because you'd really like to have somebody that's a diesel mechanic who's experienced, plus can do inspections. Because right now, fire trucks, you know, we have to take them somewhere, pay a lot of money to get inspected and stuff, so.
Well, we've come up with this, given the year end and the raise that was authorized, and moving the class up to try to get a decent wage. If that doesn't work, we'll come back and ask the selectmen to raise the wage. That's all we can do.
Everybody has the same problem. Moving to Ransley is expensive for somebody to live. Stealing a mechanic from somebody else who's already in Ransley, you potentially do that by offering more money benefits. Right? Joe?
Yeah, Donnie brings up a good point. Item number sixteen, on page two or five, bottom one. I want this guy being a mechanic, not being a carpenter or a painter.
Yeah.
Or a.
That shouldn't come out of there.
I agree.
I mean, you know, this assistant maintenance and minor repair of equipment and tools, that's okay. But perform assigned tasks including rough carboning, painting of town office buildings, and other town structures. I can't believe this guy doesn't have enough down there to keep busy.
Yeah, but that was put in there.
I know.
You could do the possibilities.
Right.
Don't cut stuff away, leave stuff in there. You may never ask him to do concrete work.
I know, I know.
One day, you may find he's gonna build a shelf with the crabs. He says, "I can do that." And the other guys won't say, "That's not in your description. You can't build that."
Well, my point is, somebody's reading this, could figure out if they want to take this job, and they get to that.
You could tell I don't deal with unions too.
I'm like, I don't paint. I don't do carboning. I'm a mechanic. So, that's all I'm saying.
I think with a union position, I think you've got to, you've got to allow for some latitude like this, so they.
Okay.
Can, yeah. I, I mean, it did strike me funny too, but again, this is, this is union, and if he's shorthanded somewhere and there's a safety matter, he should be able to assign.
Well, I would put, if absolutely necessary.
But with the public services director being his sole supervisor, it's, it's, it's not like he's got several chiefs.
I just worry that somebody reading this is gonna go, "Well, wait a minute."
That's a good point, Donnie.
I could be wrong.
John, anything else in this?
Wrong one.
No, so, back to the supervisors. You just want to scratch that? Where it says supervisor none?
Well, I don't want none in there. I don't care how you do it.
Or should we add supervisors as may be necessary?
As needed. Whatever.
Makes sense.
Something allows him supervisory capabilities if need be.
If he's gonna have a two-man job, he's gotta bring somebody to recruit help him. That's done all the time.
Supervisory upgrades may occur.
Now, this is, this is in reference to his job description and who he supervises.
It may be job specific.
He could be upgraded to supervise an employee occasionally.
No, I understand that. Again, I think we're talking two different things.
And I could actually see someday where he's got a helper down there.
Well, I mean, let's also look at the opportunity of a student coming in there, and he's gonna have to be supervised, you know, I, it just, none is definitive.
I think you're not far off from reality down the road. I mean, you look at current job markets, the market is strong across the board for multiple fields, but with this mechanic specifically, and the requests through fire department and police department would be maybe some of those vehicles and the requirements, the service pumps and hydraulics, with that in-house want. And you have to look at eventually having that higher pay, again, based on the certifications to certify the sort of state, to become that helper position eventually down the road for sure.
As needed. Are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, I've just drawn it down, supervisors, others as may be necessary.
Okay.
I think that covers it, you know, when he.
Well, because even if he needs a hand taking the transmission out, that kind of fits that bill, where he's gonna, obviously, he's the head dude, so.
He might need help painting the buildings themselves.
What a smart appearance.
Not joining the service, you know?
All right, any other changes you want to suggest to this?
So, just those typos and.
How about we move this as changed?
I'll make a motion that we reclassify the mechanic's position to grade five and upgrade the job description as presented.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any opposed? Thank you, Keith.
Thank you. It's been six, it's been six months since I've had a mechanic.
Town managers' report, department head updates, notice of public hearing for dangerous buildings received in your packet. There's been some changes. Tom?
Basically, we had trouble getting the two parties notified by law records or statute records, so because they were never notified, they were never actually notified as the statute required because the service was not, to be served, the notice was not able to be served. So, we want to move this to, to September, the first board of selection meeting date is September, it'll be five o'clock, which we had planned for tonight. And we're gonna do certified mail with return receipt request, and I've talked to both gentlemen. I'm in contact with both, and so I think we'll have no problems with giving that return at this point. And our town attorney said that that is appropriate at this point, since we didn't get the fiscal notice served, so. If you're willing to go with that September date, then we can move the public hearing to that date.
And you said you spoke with both parties?
I spoke with both parties. Mr. Patton is here, and I'm working with him. We've got a building permit in for demo of that structure, so hopefully we can get that demo this month. And then, I'm working with Gary Samshuen, he walked into my office on Friday, and so I'm working with him, and he actually came up to Clasport's this weekend with some friends and started to take some of his blondes out, noting, I wish by statute we would have to allow him to do, so things are moving in the right direction for both properties. Town may have to eventually take care of Samshuen's, but due to lack of funds, so we'll still move forward with this thing, with the process.
Do you have a problem with me asking Mr. Patton if he wants us to say anything?
Uh, no, I don't. I just came to, I've spoken with Mr. Willis at great length, and met with him more than once, and we've discussed my concerns about the property and how I'd like to proceed. And I came here only to be available in case there were questions or concerns that I could address myself. And beyond that, I think I can work with Tom. I, I have little or no money, and I want to try to, the time is gonna be of the essence in terms of addressing concerns, but I, as you probably know, have cordoned the property off. I put a chain link fence around it two weeks ago, and you'd have to work to get in, in there. Anybody could if they wanted to, of course, but it's clear that it's not appropriate to be in there, and I was trying to address concerns about, any concerns there might have been about it being hazardous. I don't feel it is a great hazardous building. I, Larry Coob expressed concerns four years ago that he was having trouble selling his house because of the presence of my old cabin, and I became engaged with Mr. Willis's predecessor and Mr. Palatier about it. We agreed on a, a plan then to stabilize the building as necessary and seal it up, which was satisfactory. But the tree that caused the damage in two thousand fourteen to the outbuildings and the shed weakened the roof. Weakened the roof sufficiently despite my efforts to, to keep it from diminishing further. The roof collapsed this last winter, so. And I actually got ahold of Tom before he was able to get ahold of me to let him know that that had occurred. I'm perfectly comfortable working with.
Good.
Yeah, so.
Thank you.
Time, time may be, this may be the most critical, because I'm gonna have to do it myself, so. I have a local man who's willing to help me on the weekends, but, you know, I live, but I live five hours away, and the weekends is all I had to, so. But I think, I think we can, I think I can get it apart. So you know, I, I really, that building is probably a hundred years old, at least eighty. It's an old IP lease lot, like most of the ones on that side of Ball Mountain Road. And we bought it twenty-five years ago, my wife and I, she and her sisters owned a camp across the road, and we were running out of room with, with the extended family cousins and so forth. We used that as a bunkhouse after I got Mr. Parker out, who had owned it, after we bought the lease from IP, and successfully used it that way for a long time. I just want to be able to continue to use it the way that it was. It's a non-conforming, grandfathered, non-compliant building, and there's no running water, there's no well, there's no septic system, but we used it with electric toilet and/or composting toilets and a four-hole pretty, which our predecessors had. And I just want.
A four-holer.
A four-holer, yeah. Well, Mr. Parker had a lot of friends who came up for.
Oh, I remember Mr. Parker very well.
With the Harleys and the shotguns and fireworks and everything.
Well, thank you very much for being here tonight.
Well, I'll be back.
Okay.
As necessary.
Any questions for Mr. Patton? Yes, Joe?
Just Tracy just pointed out before you set the hearing for the first meeting in September, that's, normal meeting is Labor Day.
It is that first week. I'll give you two more weeks.
Okay, well, you'll be notified of what we do for changes in the calendar, which will be at the end of the meeting, but that's not too far away. You can hang out for that if you'd like.
Yeah.
Actually, that's not too far away. Any questions for Mr. Patton, many on the board? Calendar, Bringsley Concerts, August twelfth. Tom, you all set? I forgot to ask you.
I'm all set.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Nice report, by the way. You also have the police chiefs in here and the fire chief. Go to the fire chief, one, for just a second, if you would. I've underlined three things here. Dennis, you're still here. On seven sixteen, at fourteen nineteen, at twenty-five eleven Main Street, a medical emergency, sixty-one unavailable, sixty-two no crew. Following day, Main Street, emergency, not breathing, sixty-one available, sixty-two delayed. And then that happens again on seven twenty-two for an injured male, sixty-one available, and sixty-two no crew.
What does it mean?
That's ambulance, not here, and not available, and delayed. This issue, well, I guess since I'm talking about it, we're gonna, we're gonna dig into this. This is something that has been brought to my attention, and, and I've asked John to look at it with the, with the fire chief, but more importantly, John and the head of the ambulance, to talk this over and find out whether it's time we talk about a new contract, look at the contract that we have, why are we not getting responses, and there's some issues that need to be discussed.
Especially the crew. They've got a rotating crew that, you know, they're at Sherlof, they're at Phillips, so why, you know, why does it appear we're underserved? Maybe that's the wrong term.
I'd like to help you a little bit, appreciating, no, I mean, unappreciatedly, we, this year, they've been, the ambulance is having probably more double calls than we've had before. It seems to be, you know, six-one gets called out of town. Now, when six-one is staffed with a crew, there's another ambulance in the Byho, but they're not staffed, okay? Sometimes they can pick up an EMT or a five-hundred and drive and run six-two, and they've been able to cover some of these calls. But there are other times when six-one is taken out of town by North Star to cover a call, and Phillips, Maggred, in fact, the other day, they had one in Vamington, they went on the call, when all the other ambulances are busy on calls. They draw them out in the area. Recently, when we had this contract, this is, this part is personal, my personal, we had this contract, it was priority to try and keep the paramedic in range all the time. We understood that they had to go to Vamington to make the call, but we weren't, it wasn't our vision to have North Star doing calls in other towns and, and leaving us without a medic in the town. So, that's something that, there's somebody, I don't know, John is a representative on the, on the board of, there's a, there's a board, and we have a representative too on the North Star board, and that's, because Tim, I believe Tim, Tim Palram was at the time. Anyway, you need to have somebody get back on that board, and so that these issues can be discussed and see what, see what their plan is. Right now, back those years ago, they used to have a crew in Phillips all the time. They don't anymore. They haven't been during the week, during the day. And so, when they're not there, Reggie gets called to go to those calls too, so it's gonna be a priority and manpower issue and stuff like that, but we have been able so far to keep two ambulances here in town, so. And there are some people that are off-duty North Star that will hear on the fly tone that there's a call, and they will come running. And another thing you should also do, the new chief has instituted something, basically, in fact, the old chief had started it, is when there's a CPR call, a lifeless CPR or code call, five times automatic tone, because we go and do the CPR while we're working on the patient, so. We respond to these calls, and I think you'll see that the new chief has been responding to ambulance calls as well.
He has, yeah. Thank you, Dennis. Thanks. I wanted to bring that to your attention. Thank you. Bringsley Concerts, we have in our packet. You can read that. We also have, this is, this will be Clean Energy Connect on August twenty-eighth. That information's available to you here at the town office. You can read it, participate. It's in Eustace at the Community Building of our Clean Energy and informational meetings, such remain power and Clean Energy Connect, and Quebec to, so on. You've probably figured out what that's all about. Next up, we received notification, and you've been told about it tonight, about the Northern Borders Grant, five hundred thousand dollars, and I so wish you had brought Earl Ross here tonight.
Trying.
Town of Bringsley, dear Earl, congratulations. According to our records, you have reached Main Roads Scholar status. In recognition of your efforts, we wish to present you with your Roads Scholar plaque and a coffee mug. Presenting, presentations are regularly made at the APW Spring Meeting or at the Skowhegan Highway Congress. Unfortunately, due to staffing issues, here at the Maine Local Road Center, we have been unable to find an opportunity to formally present this award to you. We like, we would really like. We like, we would really like to present this award in person. The recognition is an effort by the MLRC, a division of the Main Department of Transportation to recognize local road officials for the desire to learn and improve their skills. The goal of the program is to provide the opportunity for municipal officials to achieve solid foundation in local road technique, management skills. These skills will help municipalities save tax dollars through more cost-effective techniques and products. Again, congratulations, Peter M. Coglan, Director. Could you please pass along the Board of Selectmen's heartfelt congratulations? And I will personally find him tomorrow. Say, thank you.
He's been warned.
Yeah, warned. Okay, I'm tracking him down. All right. Next up is Workman's Compensation Fund Dividend. I'm glad you're all about to hang out from MMA. We get to divide up $4,318 with the Board of Selectmen. All right, maybe that's not going to happen. Our dividend is $4,318. John, you want to talk about that one?
Yeah, the way MMA set up its, all its insurance programs, all the town, member towns are actually owners, and they're different funds. So they have different rules for workers' comp, the risk pool, members of both. And they have to have, you know, actuarial reports that determine how much we pay. But like the workers' comp fund, each year is a separate fund. And they'll finally close it at the end of like 20 years. And any money left goes to all the members in terms of proportionately in terms of dividends. So every year, we get something back, because the actuariales that figure out what the rates are are pretty conservative, and most actuariales are, so. So the breakdown is $2,714 for the property casualty pool that we're in. And the $1,604 for the workers' comp, dividend for 2018. So it's one of the benefits of being a member of the main municipal.
Thank you. Select Board Communications, anything?
I guess I'd just like to follow up on the solar piece, because I don't want to leave this hanging. You know, we're going to put together a small group. And so at this point, Steve presented us with their version, which involves a lease. We've got Revision, who said, you're going to need to put money into this and, or work out a finance agreement. What other types are there, Steve? What else? I mean, if this committee, if this group is looking into what, you know, what has been out there for a product for municipalities, are those the two ways to go?
Again, you're speaking for a company's specific business model. Revision Energy's business model is very different from this model. So you're going to have to evaluate them as a whole to look at them, because you're not going to be kind with apples to apples.
Okay, so it's a matter of, all right.
Just the other way that we briefly mentioned, we own the, you know, all the solar panels. We buy it. We do what his company does.
Yep, we upkeep them.
That was what we were looking at before we tabled the proposal by a guy who will up at the airport. He was going to do a feasibility study. And then if anything came out of that, we would have paid for our installed panels. And then we would own it and take all the benefit for ourselves.
Well, he was going to charge $19,000 for a feasibility study, which I don't think, I think in both cases, the solar companies, that is something, that's just a part of your package, you know? The towns don't pay anything, unless we.
Did you say you would, after a certain point, if we contracted with you, then you would do a feasibility study, but does that?
Once we secure land option rights, then we would move ahead with the feasibility study internally that we would pay for.
You pay for it.
Yeah, there's no cost, again, to the towns, just supplying the land. And again, the benefit of the lease and the benefit of the net metering cost reductions, which goes along to.
Can I ask, what does the, how is this personal property treaty?
How is the personal property treaty?
Personal property treaty.
Same way.
The solar panels.
Same way. We approach individuals who have a desirable location and basically make the same offer to them. We propose a lease option. We actually proposed a lease or buy option in our initial discussions with the town. And the nature of the facility at Chick Hill and Airport, obviously, purchasing would not be a practical option. So we just kind of take that off the table.
So the tax benefit on free rate for administrative agents should basically be the lease, the personal profit valuation, and the reduced cost for energy.
Correct.
Okay, good. We're going to reel this one in, and where do you want to go with this now?
I.
I'm not going to let it go.
Yeah, I just think, you know, we've got, you know, we've got Nick who came and did a presentation. He would like some feedback. Steve has stayed here for the meeting. He's given a presentation and would like some feedback, though. I don't know, Steve, if looking at this, if you need to provide us with more information.
What our next step would be is if we could have an executive session meeting, we would supply the town with a sample lease agreement contract that you can look over, have me to look over, and we would also discuss lease per acre, I mean dollars per acre lease rates at that point, too.
So it looks like we're, one of them's up front money and the other one is you, not up front money, for the town, anyway.
Yeah.
No cost to the town.
And we don't own the array.
Okay, in the interest of expedientity, Cindy, where do you want to go with this? Because it seems you're.
I just, yeah, I just don't want this to just, you know, go away.
Okay, so you're not in favor of the committee?
I'm in favor of the committee, but I think the committee needs information from Steve. Actually, it sounds like certain information you have, you can't share with the committee. It needs to be in executive session, because it involves contracts.
Again, what happens, just put this up there. The reason we look for the executive session is because we can only deal with what we have present for rates and contracts. For example, we have negotiated rates with municipalities in the past that are lower. So for us to put it out in public, it's like, well, how come we didn't get that? But the time was, contracts were different.
The committee component isn't going to help you in terms of divulging rates, but this committee could be asking you very specific questions on
That's fine.
how this process goes and how it doesn't go. So going back to your initial point, committee or no committee, because that's where I'm heading.
Someone else has a question.
I want to get done with what you have, and then I'll go there.
I, I don't know. I mean, I'm not, Dennis has been very helpful with pointing out some things. I'm not sure anyone else would have your level.
Well, maybe you just maybe bring up something. Maybe we look at, if you're going to form a committee, we look at the committee to basically, to educate the board and the town about what these systems are, what they entail, and the different options that there are, because there are different providers. I don't think we're at the point where we need to look at any confidential contract. We're not even at the point where we understand the contracts. So I think, I think it would be a good job for a little small committee to get this information and bring it to you guys, so that you guys can make an informed decision on what's more.
What I would like to see is a sheet from each one of them explaining how it works and how much it's going to cost us. And then we can go from there and ask the right questions.
What's available for land? How much acreage?
Yep, we know that.
You know, does it meet the criteria? Is it near the three-phase power?
Dennis, Dennis, I don't want to interrupt. I appreciate all that, but what the committee will do is perfect. We vote committee, because I had asked the board to bring back for the next meeting what you want to see. We can do this right now, if you want to.
Why don't you assign a committee and assign a deadline for choosing a committee and assign a deadline for the committee to get us what we need? And if we can't send a committee to do that, then we do something else that's a little more expedient, whatever that may be.
Yeah, I think.
Or we do it ourselves, it'll help.
Yeah, I think a board member, I mean, we're the ones that have had the dialogue and the discussion. I think at least a board member should be on it.
I fully expect you to be on it. Please, and me too. I want to hear it too. I want to be part of it. Any points on this, Steve?
Are we going to go for an RFP, so we get a broader spectrum?
If this committee comes back and said, you should go for an RFP or you shouldn't. This is what we have. This is the market. This is what's out there. This is what we gleaned. Then we'll know. I think an RFP is, in most cases, is a good idea, but that's just my personal opinion. Mark, do you have anything different to share on this?
I was just going to ask if you folks thought it was appropriate to have one of you members in on the committee.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Small committee.
Three, five minutes.
One.
Two.
Would you serve? Dennis?
Three.
Kyle, would you serve? You don't have to. I didn't mean to put you on the spot, Dennis.
Oh, no.
Maybe Keith?
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 No, he's maxed.
He's got enough to do.
I think like you have a West Dugan electrical.
Oh, yeah.
He puts the systems in, smaller systems himself, electrical background may be beneficial, by thought, as a community member.
Yeah, let's reach out to Ross.
All right.
I mean, it's not like we're going to be meeting, you know, exonerated.
We're going to get her done. You remember. Yeah.
Can I ask one question?
Yes, sir.
Would you like to have our executive session meeting before or after the committee is formed?
Do you think the information is help, yeah, I guess we don't, I don't know.
Well, the committee should see it first, probably.
I disagree, but let's ask everybody. That's all right. What do you think?
I think we have some hard work to do to see what's out there before we get too involved with anything.
Okay, you feel the same way?
Yeah.
All our options.
I, yeah, I guess I want the information to work with beforehand, because again, it's compare, you know, we've just got to, I need to understand numbers.
How do you feel?
Well, we all want to know what the dollar value is, but if we have an executive session, then there's only a few members of the committee that can know what the numbers are.
Yeah, we don't need to divulge the numbers. We need to understand the process.
Understand the process.
So I'm in agreement with that. All right, we'll contact you. Okay?
Sounds good.
Thank you. Anything else? Yes, sir.
One thing I forgot to mention is that the work that Trish Lloyd did getting those notices of public hearing out to processor companies and capture Massachusetts. She may put in your deal a word with that, and I would appreciate the work.
She's going to blush.
And you did a good one there. That's good. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any more selectmen communication?
Something small, I was approached by somebody, they had a concern that there's no signage at the boat launch. Differentiating the kayak launch from the boat launch. And she's seen kayakers in the boat launch in the way, it's got safety concerns. Wondered if we could get a sign that says kayak boat launch or something. I thought it was good.
I do, too.
Wouldn't hurt to put a sign up.
I walked down, took a peek, and one doesn't say motorboat launch, one doesn't say kayak launch. I mean, you can put two and two together, but not everybody can, so.
Can you launch a canoe out of that thing?
Yeah.
So I would put canoe and kayak.
Kayak, you can't use that boat launch.
I'm just conveying a concern to somebody.
I know the Park Commission is looking at different signs, but they're trying to consolidate, so it's not a sign for every little thing going, because it gets confusing.
I feel the same.
They're trying to get a more consolidated thing.
I get, yeah, just, I mean, I've been down there, and yeah, that kayak launch, kayak launch is just kind of sits out there by itself, and you may not even know what it is. So just for the Park Commission to keep that in mind.
Good, thank you. Now, we got to go into executive session. Yes, ma'am, hold on.
Before you go into executive session, can you determine what the dates are for September's meeting? So we can determine the public hearing, so we can notice this for that.
So we're supposed to be September 2.
On that February 2.
Yeah.
Do you want to go back-to-back to 9th and, excuse me?
I can't.
Yeah, Monday, it'll be the 9th and 16th, or do you want to go Tuesday, the 3rd?
That works for me, anyway.
Tuesday, the 3rd?
That would ostensibly Monday of that week.
We do the 9th and the 23rd?
9th and the 23rd?
We still have two weeks between the 23rd and the first meeting in total.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that either.
I'm good.
I just don't want to skip one.
No, that's good. 9th, and so our meeting will be the 9th.
So the public hearing.
5 o'clock on the 9th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could we also confirm the next meeting, 19th, for the 5 o'clock informational meeting for Loom Lake Grove?
We can.
So make sure you guys.
So 9th, we made two changes here, 9th and 23 for September.
Got you next.
On the 9th, 5 o'clock, public hearing for the buildings in question tonight. And then you, say again, Keith?
Next slide is meeting, August 19th, requesting a 5 o'clock informational meeting on Loom Lake Grove.
You good with that, everyone?
What do we got now?
5 o'clock on the 19th.
Yeah.
You good, Dave? Ethan?
Yes.
Cindy? Okay, we all set with the calendar? Thanks for bringing that up. Yes, yes, sir.
You have to be a resident to serve, with any of this sort of person.
Yeah, you have, you recognize by the chair.
You have to be a resident. Not just a property owner, you have to be a resident. That's what I thought. I have some interest in that area myself.
All right. Thanks, everyone. We got to go into executive session.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we go to the executive session pursuant to MSRA Title 1, Chapter 13, Subchapter 1, Subchapter 405, Conformal Legal Council 40516.
Second, all in favor?
Okay, thank you all very much.
You good?
We okay?